Good evening, everyone. If we could turn our cameras on. We are going to get started. Happy New Year. Good evening. The twenty-fifth meeting of the seventy-third term of the Bureau Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being a meeting virtually, please note that I'll recognize you by saying your name as you have the floor. Once recognized, please state your name again and begin to speak. Remove of invitation for this evening, I would ask members to join me in a brief moment of quiet reflection. Thank you. Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. So please, if you have a flag on your computer in your home office or any office, please turn to your flag and see the pledge. Thank you. This evening, the showcase Baltimore presentation will be given by Nazaya Aman of Be More Empowered. Be More Empowered is a nonprofit dedicated to empowering women and girls of color through mindfulness and entrepreneurship. And Ms. Aman, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, President Mosby. Um, do I have sharing capabilities?
Yep, Matt's working on that for you right now.
Okay, all right, because I have it pulled up. All right, there it is. Thank you very much. And my name is Nazaha Amin, and I am the co-executive director and the co-founder of the nonprofit Be More Empowered. So I'm going to... All right, can everyone see that? Okay, so Be More Empowered is a nonprofit. We focus on empowering women and girls of color in Baltimore City, specifically Black women and girls. Our focus is on mindfulness and entrepreneurship. And we do that through an array of trainings, workshops, summer camps, and gatherings. So I'll just kind of briefly go over some of the things that we've done over the past. We've been established since 2017, over the past five years now. All right, so as I mentioned, we focus on mindfulness and entrepreneurship. And we have four core principles, which are sisterhood, self-esteem, mindfulness, and entrepreneurship. We were founded in 2017 by myself and my co-founder. My co-founder Kiata Iriarte Amin. I have a background in yoga therapy as well as education. And she has a background in business development and also in nonprofit management. This is a video here, but it's pretty much just kind of going over why we started it and some of our motivations behind it. So the things that we do within our organization. Our main project that we do is our Girls Empowerment Summer Camp. And we have a two-week summer camp for Black girls ages nine to seventeen. We did our fourth camp this past year. Thankfully, we were able to do a lot of just the COVID precautions. We were able to spend most of the time outside. We're located right in Harlem Park in the West Baltimore neighborhood in 21217. I'm a born and raised Baltimorean. Kiata is, has been in the city for over twenty years and was very well versed with the city. And also, that particular neighborhood is where I grew up. So 21217 went to school right at North Avenue in Drew Hill. So we wanted to make sure everything we were doing was supporting that particular neighborhood. So that's where we are located, and that's where we have our camp. So our camp, the ends of the camp, we have a capstone project where all of the girls present. They work on a business competition, a business pitch. And then at the end, they present it to a panel of Black women, business owners. And then they win a prize, they win money that can help support their businesses. We also provide quarterly workshops. And another big component that we have is we're able to be fiscal sponsors to a number of nonprofit organizations and projects within the city. Something that we are, two things we're working on for 2022. We are working on a women's business cohort. And this will be our inaugural cohort, which will be a six-month incubator program for ten Baltimore-based Black women business owners. And we really wanted to kind of have this program kind of be a little different and just kind of differentiate ourselves from other cohorts. Because we really wanted to walk the women through the program. That's why we really wanted to keep it small and intimate at ten. And then at the end, we wanted them to walk away with actual capital, not just a promise of capital or just access to it. But we wanted them to have capital to build their businesses. The next thing that we're bringing in 2022 is after-school programming. Where we can bring what we do with the girls in the summertime, we can do it in the out-of-school time and bring it to the after-school. So of course, we're working on whether it will be virtual or in-person right now. So just a little brief history again about Kiata and myself, which are the founders of the organization. Again, I have a background in yoga therapy, and she works a lot in nonprofit in the education sector. And we both have experience mentoring other small business owners. Our team is made up of other Black women, girls, and Black women. We have our interns that have worked with us, and they all actually go to really amazing schools. We have one of our interns, Leila, who was a sophomore at Morgan State. Our intern Lyric is a sophomore at Howard University. And then we have a new who is a senior at Baltimore School for the Arts, where my son actually attends. All right, some of our girls, we have some of the programming that they do. So we've done robotics, we do speaking engagements. We were able to tour a lot of Baltimore-based businesses. And with Avenue, we toured Florida Ave, right at North and McCullough. We have local artists that come in. And we also do a lot of outdoor activities as well to let the girls know that right in Baltimore City, there's a lot of green spaces. So we take them on hikes and other items. So these are some of the partners that we have. So our fiscal sponsors, our other nonprofit organizations. So we're able, as a 501(c)(3) organization, they are able to come under us and we're able to support them with their financial needs. And then also, we provide mindfulness and yoga therapy to them as well. Because we know that it's a holistic thing. It's not just about the money or the connections. It's about the whole body. These are a few of the people that we work with. And these are just some of the stats with our partner organizations. We have thirty partners in total. Most of them are Baltimore City Judy Centers, which are in the public schools. We've been able to serve over one thousand two hundred and fifty-plus vulnerable girls, women, and other individuals last year. A lot of our partners were founded less than five years ago, and most of them are youth-serving. And we have monthly partner chat and choose, and over sixty percent of our partners attended and utilize a lot of the resources that we provided for them. So these are what some of our partners focus on, a large portion of health and wellness and at-risk population. And these are some of the supporters who's helped us over these past five years. Baltimore Development Corporation, Be More Invested, Baltimore Community Foundation, Annie Casey, The City, Summer Funding Collab, and Here to Be, which is a program of Lulu Levin. And tomorrow, our new website is launching, so this is actually perfect timing. And we wanted to do it on 111, because that is an auspicious day, one of abundance, one of manifesting. So we hope you guys can visit the website as it launches tomorrow afternoon. And this is some information, our email, everything is pretty much @bemooreempowered. And this is our location right at 636 North Gilmore Street, and our information is here.
Well, thank you so much for providing that presentation to us. It was very succinct as well as detailed, and it seems like you're doing some amazing work in our community. Before I turn it over to any council members, just want to make sure I got the name correct. Is that Nazaha? Is that right?
Yeah, I'm right.
I'm still wrong. What's the pronunciation? What is it?
Nazaha.
Nazaha.
Nazaha, yeah.
There we go.
Nazaha Amin is the last name.
Nazaha Amin. Thank you so much for all that you do in our community as it relates to empowering not only our young girls, but also our women. You know, it's folks like you that are at the forefront, that we need to implore and to continue to support. That's why we do the Baltimore Showcase every single week at a council meeting to allow the citizens of Baltimore to see all the amazing work that's going on right here in the city of Baltimore. So thank you for coming on. Please do not hesitate to reach out to us. And we look forward to supporting you in your new website launch, which happens tomorrow.
Very much.
Have a great evening.
You too. Be well.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call the rule.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal of the December ninth, two thousand twenty-one proceedings are on the desk or on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on the beginning of page two of the agenda. At this point, we're going to now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight zero, Robert Sineme, Member, Parking Authority of Baltimore City Board of Directors.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee, onto twenty-one dash eight one, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight one, Dr. Ronaldo Evangelista, Member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, onto twenty-one dash eight two, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight two, Mildred Mimi Forbes, Bill, Member, Fire and Police Employee Retirement System Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk, onto twenty-one dash eight three.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight three, Dr. Yvette Yleche, Member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk, onto twenty-one dash eight four.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight four, Brianna Jones, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk, onto twenty-one dash eight five.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight five, Alexander Katzenberg, Member, Board of Fire Commissioners.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, onto twenty-one dash eight six, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero eight six, Leland Shelton, Member, Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
This nomination was assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. There are no ordinances to be introduced this evening. First up, we're going to go into twenty-two dash zero one eight seven, Madam Clerk, if you can read it into.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one eight seven, Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of Transportation, eighteen million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of eighteen million dollars to the Department of Transportation Service five-four-eight Conduit Enterprise Fund to provide funding to continue development, maintenance, and control of the miles of conduit ducts under Baltimore City, which carry electrical, telephone, and optic lines, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, onto twenty-two dash one eight eight, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one eight eight, Rezony, thirty-one oh one thirty-one thirteen Eastern Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as thirty-one oh one thirty-one thirteen Eastern Avenue, block seventeen ninety-four, lots zero zero nine and zero zero nine A, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R eight zoning district to the C one zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee, Madam Clerk, onto twenty-two dash one eight.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one eight nine, repeal of ordinance zero seven dash six zero nine and zero nine dash one three nine, Westport Waterfront Plan Unit Development. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as... Hold on one moment, please. For the purpose... Oh, I'll read it again. City Council Bill twenty-two...
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, you're fine where you left off, the property known as thirty-one oh one.
For the purposes of repealing ordinance zero seven dash six zero nine with designated certain properties as a business plan unit development known as Westport Waterfront, repealing ordinance zero nine dash one three nine, which amended ordinance zero seven dash six zero nine, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Porter.
Madam Clerk, just for the record, did you just read one eight nine or one nine zero?
I was on one eight nine.
Yeah, you finished up one eight nine, right? Got you. Would the gentlewoman from the tenth district like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. So this repeal of the PUD is something that the city council put into place over a decade ago. And so this is an opportunity for the developer to repeal this PUD so that it can move forward with this development. They wanted to make a note that, given that the development is not assuming any public financing, this is an opportunity to administratively just kind of correct some things so that this development in Westport can move forward. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
No, thank you for that explanation. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could read, please read in twenty-two dash one nine zero.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one nine zero, repeal of ordinance zero eight dash nine four, zero eight dash nine five, and zero eight dash nine six, Westport Waterfront Development District, Westport Special Taxing District, and State Obligations Pledge. For the purpose of repealing ordinance zero eight dash nine four, which created the Westport Waterfront Development District, repealing ordinance zero eight dash nine five, which created the Westport Waterfront Special Taxing District, repealing ordinance zero eight dash nine six, which authorized the pledge by the City of Tax Increment Revenues and Special Tax Revenues for the purpose of financing infrastructure improvements and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Porter.
This is in conjunction with twenty-one dash one eight nine. Councilwoman Porter, I think you're okay. You don't have to speak on this, right?
Yes, sir. You're correct. Thank you.
I thought so. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, onto twenty-two dash one nine one, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one nine one, Homeless Shelters and Traditional Housing Units, Human Trafficking Notice Requirements. For the purpose of requiring homeless shelters and traditional housing units within the city of Baltimore to place a notice regarding a certain human traffic prevention hotline in certain locations, providing that the required human trafficking notices may be obtained from the United States Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign website, providing for certain penalties and generally relating to human trafficking notice requirements for homeless shelters and transitional housing units. Sponsors, Burnett, Middleton, Porter, Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the gentleman from the eighth district like to speak on behalf of twenty-two dash one nine one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. And one, just, am I coming through okay? I was having issues earlier.
You sound perfectly fine.
Okay, so this is, again, a continuation of the other signage legislation that we've done in government buildings, hotels. Just looking to continue to expand it outward so that folks that are vulnerable know where to get help. And homeless shelters in particular, issues of trafficking and labor trafficking in particular have come up repeatedly in the work that we're doing with the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. And so this was an idea that was presented in our legislative subcommittee and just trying to move it forward. Thank you to our cosponsors and looking forward to a good hearing on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, council member, for your continued leadership throughout the years for this particular issue. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety Government Operations Committee. Madam Clerk, onto twenty-two dash one nine two.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero one nine two, Transit and Traffic Empowerment or Immobilization Chronic Offenders. For the purpose of authorizing the city, Baltimore City Police Commissioners to impound or immobilize the vehicle of a certain person, defining certain terms and generally relating to chronic offenders of parking ordinances. Sponsors, Dorsey, Ramos, Conway, Cohen, Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the gentleman from the third district like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, I don't, you don't hear me talking about chronic offenders very often. It's not a phrase that just rolls off my tongue. I came up with this bill because I realized that there are a lot of, there's a, there are a number of drivers in Baltimore City that make transportation and just being out and about around our city incredibly unsafe and uncomfortable for a lot of people and do so disproportionately to other drivers. There are about a half a million drivers in and around, in and out of Baltimore City every day. And right now, there are about twenty-three hundred that are, that have accrued violations totaling over a thousand dollars. It turns out that that's a threshold that's already existing in state law that defines this term for chronic offenders, vehicles that have accrued over a thousand dollars of unpaid citations. You know, I think there's a, there's good reason to be skeptical about the existing law where you can be booted for just three parking violations. But I think, you know, that that's, that that, that seems aggressive and a low threshold. But I think and hope that we can agree that a thousand dollars of outstanding moving violations, particularly when they're acquired at, say, forty dollars a pop for speeding violations all around the city. A thousand dollars is probably a reasonable threshold to establish that you're making a pretty unsafe environment for other people. You're creating, you're contributing to an unsafe environment for everybody. Probably every time you get in your vehicle, and you're getting caught pretty frequently. But you're probably driving in a pretty unsafe fashion everywhere you go, not just where you're being caught. And I think that we owe it to the public to try to do something to address the degree to which this creates an unsafe environment for everybody throughout our city. I know for sure that it's something that I hear about in every community in my district and from people I meet from all across the city. And just kind of as a final note, you know, this threshold, this definition of a chronic offender, as I think I mentioned, comes directly from state law. The state is actually already authorized to suspend the registration of these vehicles. But despite that, you could have a hundred speeding tickets in the city of Baltimore and be driving around on a suspended, expired registration for the vehicle. And there's nothing that we could do if we happen to come across your vehicle parked somewhere. There's nothing that we can do presently to stop you from persistently driving unsafely all around Baltimore City. This bill would literally give us the only tool we have in order to address these chronically unsafe drivers. And I appreciate the cosponsors on this bill and look forward to hearing on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. We'll now move on to resolutions being introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read Resolution twenty-two dash eight six R.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero eight six R. Approval for the exchange of a class BD seven license to a class A seven license for the use at twenty-three forty-three East Monument Street. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcoholic Beverages, Section twelve nine oh two one D one, to allow the license holder holding a valid license, a valid class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for the use at twenty-three forty-three East Monument Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two zero five, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license for a class A seven beer, wine, and liquor license. Sponsor, Glover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee, onto twenty-two dash eight seven R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero eight seven R. Informational Hearing, Office of the Chief Administrative Officer Annual Review. For the purpose of requesting that the Chief Administrative Officer and Deputy Chief Administrative Officer come before the city council to initiate the process of annually reviewing the duties of the office, requiring the review to include an evaluation of the prior year's performance metrics, requesting the officers and the council establish goals and objectives for the upcoming year, and requiring the officer and the council to identify municipal service delivery gaps that need to be addressed. Sponsors, Burnett, Ramos, Conway, Middleton, Porter, and Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the gentleman from the eighth district like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yes.
To you, council member Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So as you all are very familiar, in last year, the last term, the council passed the charter amendment and was approved by the voters to establish the Office of the City Administrator with the intent of modernizing city government and creating additional oversight and accountability for the city operations and operations of agencies, which is, I think, you know, important, important step forward for the city. We've now had a year of this new position, and I thought it was important that we begin to, you know, serve our function, which is oversight, and to bring in the city administrator and his team to work alongside us, to see how things have gone this year, to set benchmarks and expectations for years moving forward, and to share concerns and feedback that we've experienced over this year on how things have gone within that office and where are there areas of improvement potentially. So looking forward to a really good hearing and discussion on this, and thank you. You go back to the floor, Mr. President.
No, thank you, council member. Is this a requirement from the charter when this position was created through the charter, or is this...
No. I just thought it was important for us to do.
Understood. Well, we appreciate that. The resolution has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. You can find the consent calendar in section A in the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve a consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. You guys have it. The motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reading. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor for us to read short titles for the duration of the meeting. If I do not hear any unreadiness or concern, we will move forward with short titles. Hearing none, we're moving forward with short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in Council Bill twenty-one dash six eight R.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six eight R. Informational Hearing, Naming City Properties.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President and Chairwoman of Economic Community Development Committee, Ms. Sharon Green Milton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero six eight R was heard on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. At the hearing, the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation and the Department of Transportation shared valuable information about initiatives underway to improve the process for the naming of public facilities. And we look forward to reviewing the plan. I... Move the bill.
We're having, we're having some Northwest Baltimore. We're having, we're having some Northwest Baltimore data issues today.
Second.
We didn't hear, well, could you go over that last motion real quick, Madam Vice President, just so everybody hears it clearly?
I move the bill favorable.
And, I mean, Conway, there we go. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. You guys have it. This resolution is adopted. We're going to move over to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-one dash one zero six.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero six Study and Report Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department.
At this point, I'll recognize Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. It was sponsored by Councilman Burnett, and the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent electronically. I move the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The amendments from the committee are now adopted. The floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill as favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, second.
Moving the bill forward as amended has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The bill is approved as amended. On to Council Bill twenty-one dash one zero seven. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one six four Decennial Fire and Emergency Medical Services Redistricting Plan.
Madam Clerk, we have to do, we have one right before twenty-one dash one zero seven.
My apologies. Twenty-one dash zero one zero seven Study and Report Operations of the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, we'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This bill also came out of committee on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, also sponsored by Councilman Burnett. And it was also approved as favorable with amendments. So I move the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
The amendments from the committee have been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The amendments from the committee are now adopted. Mad, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
There's a second. It's been moved and properly seconded as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The bill is approved as amended. Madam Clerk, on to Council Bill twenty-one dash one six four, please.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one six four Decennial Fire and Emergency Medical Services Redistricting Plan.
I'd like to yield the floor to the chairman of this committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill also came out of committee on December twenty, excuse me, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Burnett, and the committee approved it as favorable with amendments. I move the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to, to move and probably second the committee amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And all opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it. The bill is approved as amended. On to Ways and Means, Madam Clerk. Could you please read in twenty-one dash zero one one two?
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one one two Charter Amendment Supplementary Criminal Apprehension and Conviction Fund.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move bill favorably.
Bill's been moved favorably. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
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 If we could please, no, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, if the nays could speak, I believe I heard Ryan Dorsey. I think I heard Chairwoman, I'm sorry, Chairman Dorsey.
Mr. President, may I call for roll call?
Sure. Let's do roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, please.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Yes.
McCray.
No, Mr. President, may I explain my vote?
Madam Chairwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. My vote is a no. I do agree with the bill in theory, but I am in opposition on the mechanics of the bill, which were not outlined during the hearing. Last term, the council voted for a charter review commission, and I do believe that this bill should go before the charter review commission for review prior to going directly to the voters. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairwoman. Madam Clerk, if you could please proceed.
No.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Hi, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote.
Chair, Councilman, the floor is yours.
So I would second Councilmember McCray. I do applaud the intent of the bill and its efforts to make it easier for people to come forward, considering all of the violence that we've experienced over the last few years in the city of Baltimore. But I do believe that there are some process concerns that I have and share that were raised in committee, and I do believe it should go to the Charter Review Commission. And so for that reason, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please continue.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
I believe that's a vote of twelve to three, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I believe there were four.
Eleven, four.
I'm sorry, is it eleven, four? So just for the record, I believe we have Dorsey, Porter, Burnett, and Chairwoman McCray. There we go. So yes, eleven to four, just for the record. This bill has been approved. I believe that completes all of our second readers, and we're going to go on to third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the bills and call a roll. We're going to start out with twenty-one dash eight seven.
Twenty-one dash zero zero eight seven Rezoning One Hundred East Twenty-third Street, twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred Saint Paul Street, twenty-three oh five Saint Paul Street, twenty-three thirteen Saint Paul Street, and twenty-three seventeen Saint Paul Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash one one nine, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero one one nine Rezoning Twelve oh one South Haven Street and a portion of Boston Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved, Madam Clerk. On to twenty-one dash one two zero.
Twenty-one dash zero one two zero Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash one two two, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero one two two Franchise Installation of Five Utilities Duckbanks. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been approved. Now to the last and final bill on third reading. It's twenty-one dash one two three, Madam Clerk. Could please read it in.
Twenty-one dash zero one two three Franchise Underground Conduit and Fiber Optic Cable. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been approved. We're going to move on to committee announcements. That closes out on third reading. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up, we're going to go to the Vice President of your Baltimore City Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton, and Chair of Economic Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have eleven bills that I will be announcing. And before I announce those, I just want to remind council members and sponsors of the bills that at least I'm speaking from this Economic and Community Development Committee. As I schedule hearings, a lot of my dates are based on not just getting reports from agencies. Depending on the bill, sometimes the bill has to be heard with the planning commission. Sometimes there has to be postings of fifteen, thirty, or even sixty-day notice. So those are just a few of the things that help me to decide a hearing date. So with that being said, the Economic and Community Development Committee will hold the following virtual WebEx hearings. One bill, which will be heard at two P M., and that's Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero eight three R. That's an investigative hearing, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office eviction procedures, and the sponsor, sponsor is Councilwoman Burnett. On February first, twenty twenty, for now, three bills that will be two P M. We have twenty-one dash zero one six five, which is the District and Management Party, sponsor Councilwoman Costello. At two oh five P M., we have twenty-one dash zero zero seven C R Investigative Hearing, the Baltimore Gas and Electric City and Municipal Women Ramos. We have Bill number twenty-one dash oh one six two. That's the Urban Renewal Brooklyn Curtis Bay Amendment. Councilwoman Porter is the sponsor. On February eighth, twenty twenty-two, at two P M., we have Bill number twenty-one dash zero one seven R seven nine. Again, that's twenty-one dash oh one seven nine, and that city property naming a skate park in the H hash Playfield to be Jake's Skate Park, and the sponsor of that bill is Councilwoman Costello. Two P M., we have twenty-one dash oh one eight one. That's a city property renaming Trench Tillman Elementary Middle School to Beatrice E. Gaddy Elementary Middle School, and the sponsor is Councilman Glover. At two ten P M., we have Bill number twenty-one dash oh one seven six, and that's for alcoholic beverages, and the sponsor of that bill is Councilmember Burnett. And on March first, twenty twenty-two, at two P M., Bill number twenty-one dash oh one one three, and that begins the zoning code modifications. That's an administrative bill. There's probably going to be several work sessions after that bill. On March eighth, at two P M., Bill number twenty-one dash zero one six six. That's the rezoning for block three six three five, lot zero five five, and Councilmember Stokes is the sponsor of that bill. And also on March eighth, we have at two, two oh five P M., we have twenty-one dash oh one seven nine, and that's the zoning reconditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two variant eight eleven Chauncey Avenue, and the sponsor of that bill is Councilmember Torrance. And lastly, at two ten P M., also on March eighth, we have twenty-one dash oh one eight oh rezoning of twenty-five twenty-five Insulator Drive, and the sponsor of that bill is Councilmember Costello. And I'm finished my dates. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I have no announcement, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold hearings on L O two two dash zero zero one nine Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Public Works, on the following dates. Wednesday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten A M. Wednesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at ten A M. Wednesday, August the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at ten A M. And Wednesday, November the ninth, twenty twenty-two, at ten A M. The hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx unless otherwise announced in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Next up, we're going to go to Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will be holding a hearing this Thursday, January thirteenth, at three P M. on WebEx for the Department of Public Works, a missed curbside collection. As we know, there's been a lot of missed collections throughout the city. This has been an ongoing issue, and so we will be holding an oversight hearing to get to the bottom of some of the challenges that are existing, on what we can do short term and long term to address this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And then certainly, last but not least, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements this evening.
Thank you. We do have a couple committees as a whole announcements. Everyone, please pay close attention. You know, this is related to the housing package that we originally announced at the end of last year, and we held a hearing, a committee as a whole hearing for the Dollar House Program. The repair bill, as well as the senior bill, all tied into that initial housing package. We'll have a committee as a whole hearing on Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one seven two on Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at five o'clock P M. It's going to take place virtually. Normally, we try to do committee as a whole on Mondays, the Mondays that we are not having hearings. However, the seventeenth is obviously a holiday, so that's why we had to go with the eighteenth. This will provide not only the agencies, but for everyone to come and provide their questions, concerns, problems, support, opposition to the bill. I remember we had a broader kind of overview, just to go through the bill. We know it's a big package. We wanted to make sure we got ahead of any misconceptions or misinformation to ensure that everyone was on the same page of not only the intent, but the structure and the specific explicit language associated with the bill. And that was the point of that. This is allowing now agencies and the administration to come back and provide the council their concerns, their support associated with the bill. One thing that we constantly promise is to associated with the bill. Um, one thing that we constantly promise is to run a robust, uh, legislative process associated with these really, really important bills at such a vital time, particularly when we're talking about housing insecurity, and we're talking about providing pathways of homeownership, uh, for our legacy residents who've been living with the crime, the grime, and the blight, uh, as we see real estate continue to take off here in the city of Baltimore, providing them a true access and a pipeline. That's the intent of, uh, of this, this portion of the bill. So again, that's gonna be City Council Bill twenty one dash, uh, zero one seven two. Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two, at five o'clock. It's gonna take place virtually, as well as be televised on Charm City TV, TV twenty five. Uh, next up, another committee as a whole hearing, City Council Bill twenty one dash one seven three, again, on Tuesday, January eighth, uh, so January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two, at five oh one P M. This is the conjunction bill, the repairs bill. Uh, that's gonna be televised again on T, Charm City TV, TV twenty five. And then last but certainly not least, uh, City Council Bill twenty one dash one seven four. Again, it's gonna take place on Tuesday, January the eighteenth, at two thou, two thousand and twenty two, um, at five oh two P M. Uh, and that is twenty one dash one seven four, again, will be televised on Charm City TV. Uh, that.
Who's it, eh?
I'm sorry?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, may I go over my March eighth bills again?
No.
There were, uh, one of them, I think I.
Madam Vice President, I said no, no.
One of them, I mistakenly said the wrong bill number, so I'm just gonna go over the time, the date, and the three bills on that date quickly.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, for the record, for March eighth, twenty twenty two, again, at two P M., we're gonna hear Bill number twenty one dash oh one six six. And that's Councilman Stokes, the rezoning of block three six three five. And then at two oh five P M. is twenty one dash open one, and that's the conditional version zoning with, um, sponsor Councilman Torrance. And then at two ten, it's twenty one dash oh one eight oh zoning of twenty five twenty five Insulator Drive, Costello. Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. We appreciate it. Um, next up, we're gonna go to regular announcements, so we're gonna open up the floor. Uh, any members have announcements? I see the hand of, um, the gentleman from First District, uh, Councilman Door, um, Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, teachers and parents found out through a robocall that their schools would be virtual. That was about fifty seven schools. Today has been chaotic for a lot of educators, parents, and kids, and a reminder of the importance of listening to directly impacted people. Um, few of us on this council have been working with the Parent Community Advisory Board, the Teachers Union, Casa de Maryland, organizing black student groups like SOMOS to collect N ninety five masks. We know that high filtration masks are more effective than cloth masks in preventing transmission. We wanna do everything in our power to make schools as safe as possible. Uh, the Teachers Union is distributing those masks. Additionally, um, I and a few other colleagues have heard from Parents Day who are frustrated because after the last period of virtual learning, they disconnected from the internet. It's important to, it's important to note that due to the Maryland Emergency Broadbound Benefit and Affordable Connectivity Program, no one should be unable to afford internet right now. That said, we know how the massive digital divide is in our city. It's extremely important for people to access getting online so that they can learn during this period. Uh, I did wanna put out that the Baltimore Digital Equity Coalition has set up a hotline to help folks navigate getting internet and getting it paid for through these benefits if they need them. Parents can call four one zero eight three four four two one four to get connected. Please pass that number along to folks who are not online. We will continue to push and make sure every child in our city receives an appropriate education during this extremely difficult time. And thank you to all our educators that are out there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, are there any other announcements, uh, from members of the council? Hearing and seeing none, I think that concludes our regular announcements. At this point, I would like to chair, I would like to turn the floor over to Vice President Middleton. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess before I close out, there are three, um, I guess, um, deaths that have happened. I knew all three of these, um, people personally, and they were people that really, um, set a mark in our city and, um, just will be definitely missed. The first one is Chief Herman Williams Junior, which, uh, recently passed away. He was the first African American, um, fire chief for our city, served forty seven plus years. Also, um, served, I know, on several committees as chair at, um, for M Q and just many other things. Please keep his family in prayer. And also, his son was, um, celebrity, um, Montel is, uh, Montel Williams. Uh, the second person is Reverend Dr. Boyer Freeman, which was the senior pastor of, uh, New Saint Mark Baptist Church in Forest Park. And, uh, his wife is, uh, Terry, which is also the director of the Reginald Lewis Museum. And we wanna keep, uh, uh, her family in prayer. And, and, um, Mr. Uh, for, who may probably have, both of, him and his wife. Peaches, yeah, very turn. Uh, and very strong supporters.
Madam Vice President, can you hear me? Could you, could you turn your camera off? Uh, you're having some packet issues. Could you turn your, yeah?
Can you hear me now?
You, you sound loud and clear. If you could start with the third person that you were bringing up, you sound perfect.
Okay. And then the last person is, uh, Mr. Winky Campher. Um, always see him and his together, very strong supporters of, uh, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority. Also, strong Coppin University mentors and, uh, financial supporters. Very strong supporters of Langston Hughes and, uh, the Zeta Center of Healthy Living in Park Heights as well. Uh, please keep, um, Peaches, Ms. Peaches, in prayer and her family. And those are the three main people that I definitely wanted to mention that, um, many, many people knew in this city.
And, uh, Madam Vice President, if we could also add Officer Kiana Holly, uh, to the list. She was murdered in the line of duty, uh, serving the citizens of Baltimore. Um, we know that there are a tremendous amount of folks, particularly in the northwest section of our city, that have seen a huge loss of what they affectionately know as Kiki, uh, 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 a, a, a daughter of Baltimore City, uh, Baltimore City Public Schools, who went on to serve her community, uh, by being a police officer. Uh, and we all mourn. We mourn not only for her friends, her classmates, her loved ones. Uh, we also mourn from the members of the Baltimore Police Department, uh, who served with her side by side to again, serve the citizens of the city of Baltimore. So, uh, we will lay her to rest tomorrow. Uh, and, um, if you could please include again Officer Kiana Holly, uh, in our moment of silence.
Will do. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, at five P M. And may we have a moment of silence for Chief Herman Williams Junior, Reverend Dr. Boyer Freeman, Mr. Winky Campher, and Officer Kiana Holly. And now to date, six, the families and victims, which is the number of six homicides. Also, the one thousand two hundred and fifty deaths of COVID um, from the Maryland Department of Health since, uh, this is the number from December ninth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that moment of silence. There being no further business before the desk, this concludes the twenty fifth meeting on the seventy third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.